Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee, the whole meeting for August 12th, 2010. I'd like to ask our clerk, our acting clerk this evening, Fred Kimble, to please take the roll call.
Sure.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Forsley is absent. Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Klebenow?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Co-counsel Lamperello Perez?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Fire Prevention Bureau Director Daniels?
Here.
Fire Chief Trout?
Here.
Village Planner Malik?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, Your Honor. Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item before tonight of the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held July 29th and board meeting held August 2nd, 2010. Any corrections? Hearing none, moving right along, open forum. We have one open forum request before us this evening from Mr. David Dixon at 102 North Hudson. Mr. Dixon.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
I'm here tonight, I'm with the Lions Club and the Lions Cub and Heartland Food Corporation, which is a Burger King franchisee. We're raising funds for Lions Kids Camp. And it costs about $1,000 to send a kid to camp, and there's been $60,000 cut out of their funds this year, so we're trying to replace that. And one of the things that we're doing, we have a host of things that we're doing, but one of those things we're doing is myself and my office and several of the Lions are going to go over the train tracks and see if we can sell these dollar coupons that we have to raise funds with. And we have two dates, Friday tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. and then Monday, August 23rd from 7:00 to 8:30 a.m. And I guess I've got two things. First of all, I'm here to get a permit to do that, and the second one is to invite everybody here to come over and donate some money so we can send the kids to camp.
Did you bring any of the coupons with you tonight?
I have them in the car. If anybody would like to buy any, I do indeed.
You can get a jump start right here.
I have several thousand. How many would you like?
Well, if you trusted one of us, perhaps we could sell a few of those for you as well.
That would be great.
Any questions from the board members?
No, just that I know that in the past we have made similar approvals, kind of after the fact, so I would hope that on Monday we can get this on the agenda and do it. Just one other question, as a Lions member. I know that they're also thinking of doing a car wash here in Westmont, and I wondered if that takes any kind of special permit or anything.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
If it does, the date is August 28th, and we're going to be doing it at Park Federal over by Jewel.
So as long as it's private property, we're fine? Okay.
You said the donations were down. Were those private donations for Lions, from business? You said it was down, the donations are down $60,000.
They, you know, they came to one of our, we did rallies with our managers to get this off, and Lynn Raski out of Sycamore, I'm not sure, I think she's a district governor, she came and they had just, their funds were lower, they had to cut several projects, and they didn't want to touch that project, but they had to cut so much that they had to at least take some from it. So those are 60 of these blind and deaf kids that won't go to camp. So, I don't know if you've ever heard the story behind these kids, you know, they all talk about 51 weeks out of the year, you know, they're the strange kid. They're the kid that's not like everybody else, but one week out of the year, they get to do the same thing that every other kid does. And, I mean, these kids, they have baseballs with a beeper in them, they play baseball, they ride horseback. One of the things that, I guess a little frightening to me, is they do archery with them. I wouldn't want to be anywhere near them whenever they did that, but, you know, these kids actually get a chance to be like everybody else. One of the ladies that came to talk to our managers was an ex-camper. She's now in her 50s, but she was an ex-camper. And she told a story about, whenever she went, she said up until that point, she says, "Here I was, I'm nine years old, and my four-year-old brother is watching out for me. You know, my parents wouldn't let me do anything, because they were so afraid I'd get hurt." And she said, "The biggest problem my parents had, whenever I came back, was after that, they couldn't keep me under control anymore. Now I went outside and skinned my knees and skinned my elbows, just like everybody else." So, it's pretty heartwarming to watch the story and make it happen, so we're, our goal is to raise $200,000 this year.
Okay, wonderful. Very good. Thank you.
One thing we should mention, as far as soliciting near the train station, we always ask groups not to solicit on the platform.
Do not solicit on a platform?
Do not. The property is owned by the railroad. We just lease the property and own the building. The railroad does not want solicitors down on the platform.
So stand on sidewalks where people come off?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't know that. I'm glad you said that. We would have been right on the platform. Any other questions?
Any other comments, board members?
Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in, Dave. That is the only open forum request we have. Moving right along, reports. I'd like to, at this time, call Larry Forsberg forward, head of our Chamber of Commerce, for a report on the Westmont Auto Group.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide the briefing tonight. Last fall, as everybody was working to try and figure out ways to keep our community events supported and moving forward, the concept of the Westmont Auto Group came forward and has been moving forward rapidly. One of the things I want to do is make a couple of quick announcements of what's coming up, and I'm going to ask Larry McIntyre, who's our project manager for this program, to come up and talk a little bit about the car sale that's coming up next month. First of all, you'll see that there's a name change. The Westmont Auto Mile is the new name, although I find myself occasionally still saying Westmont Auto Group. This came out of a conversation in a recent meeting, someone out of the New England area. There's a Boston Auto Mile, which I guess is of great renown up in New England, and that's where you go to find a deal. And there was also some discussion that the Westmont Auto Group made it sound like as if it was one car dealer. So we came up with this name change, and the response from the dealers has been very positive. So this is what you'll be seeing in the future on the website and all the other promotional material related to the Westmont Auto Mile. Also, the membership has grown slightly. We have nine brands represented, and we recently added the Alpha Motor Group over on Ogden Avenue, which recently opened for business, and so we're glad to have them involved. And also, our website will be launching shortly. We expect to have that up next week, so as soon as that's available, we'll be launching you, sending you a link so that you can connect to that. And at this time, I'd like to ask Larry McIntyre to come up and talk a little bit more about the details surrounding the auto sale that's going to happen on September 24th and 25th. Larry?
Take those notes, they'll be in files.
There you go.
Thank you. This is a little map that we put together that kind of shows the layout of what our proposal is. The actual event is a Friday and Saturday, September 24th and 25th. The suggestion is that on the 24th, that would be more of a select customer invited in for the Friday to get a sort of a preview of what's going to be on sale there at the event. And the hours on that Friday is going to be from 3:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. approximately. That's what the proposal is. And then on Saturday, Saturday is going to be more just for the general public and for selling cars to everybody, come one, come all, you know, promote it to all of Chicagoland. And the hours for that would be 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. is what they're discussing. And as you can see there, the car dealerships were thinking they need at least 40 cars. Forty cars per dealership, per brand, to make this worth their effort. They would definitely like more. And as you can see, we tried to maximize our space. So when this says 115 spaces here and 91 here, that actually counts the handicap spaces. It also counts the spaces next to the handicap spaces for the load-in. Since this is going to be blocked off completely for private use, you know, the handicap aspect won't apply for this any longer. But, so it's going to use all of these two lots, and then the notion is that we'll close off Plaza Drive approximately the same distance that's closed off for the red, white, and barbecue. And so that's just to the east of the IGI driveway, so that they can continue to do business on both Friday and Saturday, and then close it off all the way up to the Egress, to the south parking lot down in here. It was discussed that potentially the south parking lot could be used for, you know, car sales. However, that parking lot is not in quite as good a condition as the main parking lot, and plus, we do need a space for people to come who are going to be the guests to the event, you know, for the people who are going to be shopping. And so the notion is that that'll be left open for customer parking, but also, there is a conversation about possibly providing a shuttle and a valet service. So let's say this fills up, potentially, we would use a park district van, and we can shuttle people to and from, or take their cars valet service-wise up to the parking lot where the basketball courts are, just to the northeast of Ty Warner Park. And so that's sort of the layout. Through the promotion, we were kind of thinking that we were going to only promote one main entrance for the event, and that would be at the intersection of Ogden and Blackhawk. And sort of the goal is to bring everybody who's coming, no matter where you're coming from throughout Chicagoland, come to Ogden. That way, when you're on your way to the event, you're going to be driving right by the car dealerships, and you're going to get a, you know, lay of the land in terms of where our car dealers are, and then you're going to drive up Blackhawk Drive, you're going to come to the event. We're still working out quite a few details, but right now, the thought is, is that this is going to be for display only. No sales will actually take place in terms of title transfer, taking of money, or anything like that. You come up, you look at the car, you can test drive off of this property, but then, when it comes time to closing the deal, the current thought is that you'll go back to the dealership. And we sort of like that idea, we think that makes things easy. And at the moment, that's what the car dealerships are also inclined to do. Over here, you see the entertainment activity area. One of our conversations, basically, if anyone has families, young children, it's hard to talk purchasing a car if you have some kids that you're trying to entertain or trying to keep them busy. And so we have some different leads that we're pursuing on, in particular, children's activities, and so therefore, they will, you know, we'll keep them busy over there. In addition, that's an area where the park district staff will greatly assist. They have offered staff to come out on Saturday and provide activities and things of that nature. That's mainly for Saturday, but we're going to discuss if we need that for a Friday night as well. There's also discussion of, you know, having some light music out there, not some huge major band, but some music, maybe some jazz or some other type of band. And there's discussion about possibly having a couple of food vendors out there, and the way that conversation is kind of evolving is, we would select a couple of food vendors to come out, and we would just let them sell food. And they would make the profit, and that would be all for them, but that way, it's providing some food for the people who come out. The Westmont Auto Group would supply bottled water, and you can contract vendors in which you get your name and logo onto the bottled water, and so we're looking into that, provide water for everyone who attends. Like I said, I think the setup is going to take place on Friday morning, but I think we want to go ahead and request the possibility of closing everything down for Thursday, just in case the dealers decide, no, we need an extra day, we need to, you know, we're trying to get 320-plus cars over there. That might be a lot of work, so maybe they might need Thursday evening. So when we come before the board during the next set of meetings, that's going to be within the request, is to have that flexibility. Let's see. There might also be some additional cars parked here in this area here, just to try to boost our numbers for overall car sales. In conversation with the park district, they do want to keep the cars off of the field, but they don't have a problem with this. So if we're able to do that, it's hard to say. We'll have to go out there and really map it out, but that potentially could be another 100 cars right there. Let's see. Each car brand will want their own tent, and so they're suggesting a 20 by 20. So we're looking into pricing on getting a 20 by 20 tent per car brand, and so the way it potentially would look, we're going to actually kind of draw straws to see where your cars will go, and, but all of Mercedes-Benz cars will be together, all BMW cars will be together, and each area will have their own tent. So potentially, you'll see a tent here and a tent here, and they'll be kind of throughout the entire layout. But they'll each have their own 20 by 20 space to set up as they wish, to promote their vehicles as they wish, but basically, a place to bring back the customer and do your initial sales pitch. And, let's see. We're hoping to have another meeting next week, and that's where we're going to make further decisions about marketing, coming up with a final name for what the event will actually be called in our promotions, and deciding what we're going to do. Originally, there was a thought that we were going to use a lot of billboards, but in our last meetings, the conversation moved towards print, and so we're kind of looking more in that direction. We'll be talking with the police department about hiring overnight security, and of course, working with Public Works for those street closures, but that's a lot of-
Larry, you want to give us, for those people, and it may not be familiar with this project, a little history of how this came about and what the benefits will be for the village and the park district and the entire village?
Certainly. I believe our first official meeting was held in December. Trustee Forsley led a meeting of the Admin Finance Committee, and the chamber came to that meeting to discuss ways in which we could generate revenue to assist with the funding of some of our dearest community events, and in particular, the main focus initially was the fireworks. And with that, the conversation evolved, well, not only should we maybe try to figure out how to provide funding for our events, but maybe we can benefit Westmont and the car dealerships by working together cooperatively in a marketing campaign that promotes Westmont as a destination throughout Chicagoland, throughout the Midwest, in which we want everybody to know that Westmont's the place to come and buy a car. And so it took quite a bit of time, and a lot of meetings, and a lot of people did a lot of work on it. But I would say probably about June, we were finally ready to start moving ahead with planning, and so for the past, unfortunately, when June hits, that's when we're busy with some other events like cruising nights and Taste of Westmont, but we've been putting things together for the past month, and I think we're on schedule to pull this event off late September.
Larry, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Obviously, because I don't want the dealers to be surprised when they start to mobilize up there, but in the street, you've got space for 100 cars, which would be 3 by 30, actually 3 by, you know, 33, plus 3,200 square feet of tent space in the street and the lot. How are they going to be able to bring 40 cars apiece with that setup?
Well, there are definitely some logistics to figure out, and that's the reason this space here that I mentioned-
Yeah.
-will be utilized, so that's not in the current figure, you know, tabulation of total cars. Also, you know, very likely, the tents will be put into the green space. So you move it right off of this, so if Mercedes-Benz has all of their cars here, we'll look to put their tent right to the side-
Because the size logistics just doesn't, it doesn't fit.
It's going to be very tight. We're trying to accomplish a lot.
Larry, you really think we need two entrances, the entrance and exit for that south parking lot? They can't get away with one of it and bring the cars closer to Blackhawk?
Do you mean this entrance here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we need it?
I mean, well, the object is, is people are going to be driving down Blackhawk, the cars are going to be behind the bushes over there in the parking lot on the north side. They're going to be farther down to the west on, what street is that?
Plaza?
Yeah, Plaza, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you move the end down to-
People would see it more and-
Off to Blackhawk.
You know, I'm just worried about the guys all the way at the end on the west end. Is everyone going to walk all the way down there to see them? It's farther, you know, farther away, and, you know, if this thing continues to grow and you find out you need, they have more cars, then this thing goes farther. I'm just wondering if those guys at the other end are going to get the short end of the stick there.
And I'm sure that will be a concern, you know, whoever gets this spot potentially will, you know, feel the same.
Because it's like you've separated them into two different areas.
And that's just to try to maximize the amount of space. But you're saying if we move this barricade to here-
Yeah.
-we add a lot more space to put more vehicles in there-
And people see the cars there when they're driving into Blackhawk.
Absolutely.
Right. And there's still an entrance to that lot off of Blackhawk.
Yeah, you're only looking at 60 cars there, too.
That's right, so for the customer parking here, we'll lose a few spots here, but that shouldn't be a problem, and people will just have to exit the way they come in. I think that's a good idea.
That's a great idea.
We'll run by them on Tuesday, and if they're good with that. I think, I know the reason why we were kind of thinking here is because for test drives, all of these cars, ideally, they sell every single car that shows up, right? And so if you have a car in the middle here, you're going to have to figure out a way to pull it out for that test drive, and there was just a little bit of thought that if it ends here, if you egress to, a thoroughfare begins there, it might be a little easier. Plus, then you can use this entrance, but, I agree with you. I think that's a good suggestion, and we should pursue that. Probably add another 60 cars easy right there, maybe.
Or at least fit your 320.
It would make it more spacious.
Yes.
It wouldn't be quite as tight.
He wants to look at cars.
Yeah.
But our goal is to come to the next set of meetings with the full set of requests that are required by the village board for you to vote on. We are kind of moving ahead. If there's any questions or suggestions, we're hoping that you can contact myself, Fred is the chair, or Larry Forsberg at the chamber, any of us can-
Is there a rain date?
There is not. And the thought was, this came up at the park board meeting as well, the thought was that if you try to create one, maybe you just have it one week later. One week later is the Fall Harvest Festival, which the chamber is holding on the south side. It might not necessarily compete, and we'll discuss this on Tuesday. If the car dealers want to do it that weekend, and we feel we can pull it off in spite of a second event going on in town, maybe we just go ahead and move ahead with that.
Any other questions?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Thank both Larrys.
Larry.
Also, on Monday, we will be recognizing village employees and making retirement presentations at that time. I brought this up once before, but I'd just like to make a couple of comments. The traffic on Cass Avenue is getting to be awful, to put it mildly. People avoid going down Cass, or there are so many streets being blocked off, that there's more and more traffic for us downtown. And also, a problem that we have is, I guess it's an indication that our economy is doing better, is all the freight trains and commuters that are going through Westmont and all the towns along the Burlington Northern. But one thing I was curious about is, why are these trains going so slow? And one of the reasons for that is that there's a lot more trains. I think they're stacking up, and when they go into the city of Chicago, they're working on a new crossing in Downers Grove on, what street is that, Belmont?
Belmont.
There's all kinds of reasons, but I, you know, and sometimes the trains also stop. So I did a little investigating through the Illinois Municipal League to find out how long they could block an intersection, and I think legally, they're allowed to block an intersection for 10 minutes, and then the train is supposed to move. But as these cases have gone to court in one of the northern suburbs, took one of the railroads to court, and they, the reason that they did is that the train stopped for 45 minutes. So they filed a lawsuit against the railroad. Well, they went through the court system and ended up in, I believe it was the Illinois Supreme Court, and the railroads won out. So in other words, they, as long as that train is moving, it could just be creeping, there's nothing that we can do. The railroad has the power over all of us to pretty much do whatever they want, and it's very, very frustrating for all of us, and I get more comments from people all the time. And now they, the manager has mentioned to all of us that they started some resurfacing on Route 83. They, the state never bothered to let us know, or Kernon Hills, or any of the streets, Oak Brook, that are affected by this resurfacing. So those people are coming over and using our, more, people are using our crossing in Westmont. But it's a bad situation, and as far as I'm able to tell, there's not much we can do about it. But if anybody has any suggestions about something that we can do, we would love to consider those. But in the meanwhile, it'll continue to be very frustrating for all of us with all the traffic coming through our town. I mean, it's good for business, but there are just too many, too many cars, and it's an unfortunate situation. That is all that I have at this time, and moving right along, our village clerk substitute.
I believe that the clerk left no items for the seaman.
Okay. Next, our village attorney.
I have no report to her.
Thank you. Village manager?
Thank you, several things. Also on Monday, I think a representative from the St. Jude organization is going to be here tonight to present a formal presentation regarding the recent fundraising event that they had here in the village of Westmont, so that'll be an activity on Monday night as well. Couple of other things I wanted to report, that earlier this week, a number of staff members participated in a conference telephone call with DuPage County regarding the recent flooding event, and the Illinois Emergency Management Agency and FEMA's looking into the amount of damage in the county. There are FEMA teams that are actively in the county now, they're looking at different damaged homes and public areas. As of today, we had a team come through, and our Public Works Director and our Fire Chief participated with them and looked at several homes that we had identified to us from that questionnaire process that we've talked about previously. One of the questions that was asked at this conference call we had earlier this week is how long is it going to take before the federal government makes a determination on whether or not we qualify for funding? And basically, the answer we were given was that they don't know, or we don't know what that answer is. So at this point, we just don't know how long it's going to take. But we do know they're out there actively evaluating the information and trying to gather it. And we still are accepting, we still have the questionnaire up on the website, and if people are just hearing about this for the first time, they can download that questionnaire and send that in to us. Wanted to mention that DuPage County has been in touch with us and asked permission to use this boardroom for a budget hearing. We talked with them as recently as today, and have confirmed the date of September 22nd, at 7:00 o'clock. This is a relatively new program they've started, I think they started it last year, and they try to break the county into like three different zones and hold these public budget hearings. We have asked them for permission to put that meeting on TV and to tape it and treat it just like we do our other meetings, and we'll see if we get permission to do that. Wanted to talk a little bit about the, and we've talked about this before, the interoperable radio project in DuPage County. This is a project that's been in discussion stages for some time now, really grew out of the 9/11, 2001 disaster, in which we determined in this country that there was a lack of interoperable communications between all of our public safety agencies. And one of the things that DuPage County's been working on the last couple of years is to try to bring technology into the county that will provide that interoperable communication. There is, it's a complex sort of set of deadlines, but there is some grant money that's involved, and the Emergency Telephone Systems Board, which is the entity in the county that is in charge of this project, they met today, and we just found out this afternoon that they have set a deadline- and we just found out this afternoon, that they, they have set a deadline of September seventh to find out from all the agencies in the county whether or not we are interested in participating in this, in this radio project. That being said, there's, there still are a lot of unanswered questions. We, we have not seen an intergovernmental agreement yet. There's still a lot of costs that haven't been identified. But, and I was not at the meeting this afternoon, our police chief was, but he, he told me that they talked about this deadline, and they, they've set this deadline for this letter of intent, but they're, they're calling it a non-binding letter of intent. And because of how our meetings fall, and the fact that our next set of meetings would actually be the day that it was due, I would like to ask permission to put an item on for Monday night for consideration to authorize us to execute a letter of intent, a non-binding letter of intent. If we get enough information prior to that deadline, that we feel that it is something that's worthy that we want to consider. Again, it would be a non-binding letter of intent at this point. And there still would be an intergovernmental agreement that would come back to the board at some point for some kind of inaction. So I, I just wanted to ask for permission to add that to the agenda for Monday night. And then I wanted to mention that we've got our electronics recycling event tomorrow, the second Friday of each month, from seven AM to two PM, up at the Taiwan overflow park. And the last thing I had was passed out a list of supplemental purchase orders. There are two purchase orders on there, and particularly, I wanted to draw the board's attention to. One of them to Vidito Tree Services for seventy-three hundred dollars is for some tree trimming that was identified actually by the Village of Claritin Hills. It's at our boundary. It's property in the Village of Westmont. There was some site issues there, and there was some issues with the quality of the trees in there. And talking to the Public Works Director, it's, it's something that we feel that we need to get addressed. The, the purchase order that I've put on the list is a not-to-exceed purchase order. We, we do feel that, you know, we can do quite a bit of that work in-house, so it'll probably be less than that. The other one, which I realized that as I'm looking at the list, we, I did not do a very good job of identifying what it was, was actually something that we talked about at the Public Works Committee meeting earlier this week. It's for Civil Engineering Services, Inc. again, a not-to-exceed five thousand dollars. This has to do with the Hidden View Drive project. What we talked about at the Public Works Committee meeting is we had monies in the budget to do our portion of the, the reconstruction of Hidden View Drive, which include storm sewer work there. That was contingent upon working with a developer who was developing the property to the east. And that is now, that property is now in the possession of a bank. The bank is not willing or able at this point to go forward with the, the development commitment that, that was needed to be able to do that project. What the committee talked about was actually sort of doing a phased-in approach and doing the storm sewer work this year. So this purchase order represents actually taking the plans and modifying them in a way that, that would be ready to bid just for the storm sewer work. And we have money in the budget this year for that storm sewer work. So wanted to add those two purchase orders onto the agenda for Monday night.
Would you go over the time and date for the recycling?
Yes.
Purpose again?
It's tomorrow, which is August thirteenth. The events are always the second Friday of the month, and they run through December, and then we will pick it up again next May. It's from seven AM to two PM.
Okay. And it's for?
Electronics. It's for computer equipment. We do have a list of equipment on our, on our website.
Okay.
It's just about anything electronic. It's not white goods. It's not hazardous waste. It's only electronics.
Okay.
And that, that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee items. Start with Trustee Emery.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone for a great volunteer appreciation picnic last week. The weather held out, and it was attended by so many people. It's just amazing the number of volunteers we have here in town. And just thanks once again to all of them for making all of our wonderful events happen. Without them, it wouldn't be possible. And then I also wanted to mention that the Maze Lake Golf outing was last Thursday, and it was a great turnout. The dinner was actually held at Maze Lake, which gave the opportunity for a lot of the residents there to attend, and wanted to congratulate them on a really, really nice event. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Klebinow.
Um, just one reminder, and that there is a community blood drive August eighteenth at the Fire Department Headquarters, if I'm correct. And, but I don't remember the time. Chief Trout, do you remember? Okay. But just want to remind the people, they can check with the, the Fire Department Headquarters and, and get the time on that. But want to remind people. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Oh, nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott.
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, new business. Twenty-nine East Chicago Avenue. Board, a consider request to allow an exception to the Village sprinkler ordinance for twenty-nine East Chicago Avenue.
Hi. My name is Sam Shaheen. I live on five oh eight Nelson Lane on Westmont. I had that building over there since middle of eighty. Been doing good. And until the road on Chicago Avenue went under construction, then Francis Catering had to close his door and move. Since that time, it took was three four years to get that road to open, be able to put it for rent. And the economy went down, and I had nothing but the problem since that time. And everybody come, they say, oh, space is too big. And even we lowered the rent, tried to do whatever we can, but it just simply, people cannot afford that bigger of a space. You know, it's almost three thousand square feet, somewhere about twenty-nine hundred. The building, total building, about forty-seven hundred square feet. I have labor already occupied part of it. And Francis Catering, actually, this place was, had so many room, then, but I had to take the room away to clean the space and make it one open space. It does have a fire alarm system. In fact, the space have maybe, maybe total fourteen, fifteen fire alarm sensor in the building, in that one room alone. And I've been getting a lot of call for a smaller space. And I have no choice but to try to offer it with a smaller space. They had told me that I may need a sprinkler system, definitely. I, it's not in the budget, especially I've been suffering now. It's almost six, seven years that place is vacant. And I have somebody want to open like a sign company, where it's really not required much parking, and, and only, you know, have a, a computer machine to, and he sell, you know, to, to order by mail and so on. It does not require any major machine to construction or something. I thought maybe I could give him half a space and offer it to somebody. And this way, definitely he will collect revenue, because there are definitely sale tax on the stuff he sell. And maybe I'll get the other one, you know, rented. And, and so I hope that thing work out. And I thought maybe if he have any machine or anything, let's say, maybe it could cause a hazard or fire or something, which he say he doesn't, what he is right now, he doesn't have any of that. Maybe he could put some automatic fire extinguisher or something, you know? And I was hoping that would work out, you know, this way I could get in business. And I know my, the building had a good record, no, never any fires over twenty years I owned it, or any, any problem like that. And fire department close to us, and hopefully we don't need it.
Do we have someone from the staff that's here to give us an update on the, on this project?
Doug Daniels, Fire Prevention. Director Kimball and myself had spoken many times that this building with the modification does exceed the current ordinance that Westmont has. And it is out of the B-one district. So in, the work that he wants to do does exceed the ten percent, ten thousand, or one thousand square foot. And while we sympathize with what he wants to do, this is our ordinance that was passed, we have him that wants to make a bigger space smaller, and we have other places that want to make smaller places bigger. So you're going to hear a lot of people that own these strip malls and modifying them. You have to make a decision. Any questions?
Is the alarm system that's in there now connected to the Fire Department?
It's connected to alarm company, what they call the Fire Department.
So.
So it's not, is it wireless? Is it?
No. If he's direct, if he's monitored by another company, he falls into that, he'd have to connect to us and within the mix.
So that's going to change eventually anyway?
Yes.
Yeah. I think I will give a letter for changing. So I'll be changing the minute the contract is over.
Okay. Thank you.
So what you're saying is this may be the first of numerous requests that are going to be coming before the board for.
Well, numerous requests are good. There's a lot of businesses that want to move in. There have been other instances of other strip malls and buildings that are requesting remodeling variances, both enlarging and both downsizing, so.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
The only thing that I would say is that we have gone to a lot of work here of late to come up with a, a code and that to put into place to work with businesses and that. As it was prior to this point in time, it was twenty-five hundred square feet. So if we'd have left it alone, I mean, it still would have fallen underneath that. And honestly, as, as a trustee sitting on this board, I appreciate the hard times, and I appreciate businesses wanting to make these changes and that. But I feel with the amount of work that's been put into this ordinance in the way it's been put together, that I don't see how we can turn around and just start granting variances to go against the ordinance that we've put all this work into. I, I'm sorry, but I'm, at, at this point, I would, I would have to say that I'm, I'm not in favor of granting a variance to the, to the point for this.
Okay. Now, I heard that it was one thousand square feet. Would that be fine?
No, it's twenty percent or up to a thousand square feet.
I mean, I could give the guy one thousand square feet. He really didn't need that fifteen hundred. I was going to divide it.
No, it doesn't. It's, it's based on the way the building has to be divided, and what kind of work has to be done within the building in order to do that. And there's several parameters that are in place that will trigger those particular parts of the sprinkler ordinance. That's why we have someone like Doug Daniels, and we have our ED Department that takes care of those things. So I mean, it's basically brought to us, we, we make the decisions either yea or nay. And we also try to come up with codes and ordinances that are somewhat palatable. We could have stayed pat at the twenty-five hundred square feet, but we're trying to come up with a way to do it. And I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but I can't, myself, I can't see granting any variances to go against what we've just put a lot of work into. I can't. And.
I, on the other hand, feel a different way about it. We bent over backwards to try to accommodate and go along with the hard times that had fallen on the downtown business district. The fact that somebody has a tenant that's, that wants to come into the village, this isn't somebody that's coming in front of us and saying, I think I could rent out my space more easily if I did X, Y, Z remodeling, so I would like a buy. I understand the work that was put into the ordinance, but I also understand, especially in this instance, the damage that the length of time Chicago Avenue was closed did to all of those businesses. There were a lot of them that shut their doors permanently, and the owners suffered greatly personally. So the fact that Sam has somebody that wants to come in and, you know, says, here's the business that I want to do, and you have an opportunity at least try to recoup some of the losses. I think, since we gave a moratorium for three years on downtown businesses, I for one don't want to play hardball with everybody else in town. So although I appreciate Trustee Fleming, your feelings on the subject, I don't agree with it.
Trustee Scott, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, we made this comment before, is that we gave the changes for downtown, which is a more hazardous area. Let's face it, age-wise, with the construction of the buildings, yet the newer buildings are getting the short end of the stick right now. So with that, I'm going to have to agree with the Trustee Emery on it. I, I will tell you one thing, though. Just personally, I would like you to see if you could find a better tenant for what's in the end of that building. I've never been happy with manpower placed there down the street from a school. It's a bad location for it. That doesn't mean that this, this, it's, you know, it's, I'm telling you, you have to get rid of them. But I'm sitting there saying, if your building starts getting better, you're starting to get more tenants, you may want to consider.
I definitely.
Because that's not a good situation down from a school.
Believe me, I, all my family, we get twenty member of my family own houses in Westmont. Every single day I pass by that building. When the mayor was talking about Westmont on campus, I pass by it every single day. I go in the back of the building. Anytime I see something goes wrong, I try to get on it right away. I mean, in fact, you know, somebody came dump garbage in the alley over there, I called the police and tried to investigate, tried to clean this place. I like it to be, you know.
Also had trouble with one of your tenants before there that left dumpsters full of construction material too.
Yeah. This guy, actually, he's no longer there. And honestly, I hate to be in his shoes. Since the minute his, his only son died in the Marine, he just gave up. He didn't give a damn about anything. So he said, want to go? I'm, what can I do? I'm not going to sue him. The guy, he's suffered more than enough. So, so he left and go. So, you know, I know, maybe I lost some money, but he lost a lot more.
I have a question for Director Daniels, and perhaps even the Fire Chief. Would your feelings on this project be any different, or would you feel any differently if he were to upgrade to wireless and connect right to us sooner for the smoke heat? Would that influence your feeling at all?
No, if his system is working satisfactorily now, it's sufficient.
Do we know that's happening?
I don't know, because we're not monitoring it. But we require annual tests. So if they don't give us an annual test, then we do go after and find out. So I can say annually, it's being tested.
Here comes the chief.
The, the only caveat to this situation that I might offer, that if we do give a variance in this, that we come up with some proposal, that he abides by what the ordinance is in a timeframe, that we generate some sort of timeframe. If he's generating income, then we might want to throw that in.
Right. Just a point of order here. I think we've repeatedly referred to a variance. This is an exception to the sprinkler ordinance. This is not a part of the zoning code. Therefore, a variance, I think, would, which would require an appearance before the Planning and Zoning Commission is not necessary. This can be decided by the Village Board.
Thank you.
The only thing I have to say is, we take each one individually as they come before you for a variance. As long as, and it seems like there's a possibility, there might be a, a new thinking on our ordinances, especially in the area of fire prevention. And I certainly would not want to see a complete rollover from what we've worked on for so many years to keep our businessmen and our community safe, even though we are going through hard times.
Thank you. Could I ask the, possibly the Fire Department could answer this better? This is a print shop. Are we expecting hazardous material, printing on the site, anything that our Fire Department needs to come and check up on?
He have computerized things here on sheet on them. It's all computerized. It's not, it's like a work on laser.
It's not like the old printing shops where they?
No, it's not.
There's no hazardous material?
No, there's no hazardous material.
That's most what the modern printers is, not the hazard.
Okay. Because I think that makes a, a big difference right there, too. And there's no living quarters above it, obviously. It's strictly the one story. So that is a little better. that is a little better.
Do you have any comments? Any other questions or comments?
I have more people normally call me for the half, but I never offer it because I don't want to split it. I want it to be all, but with the bad economy, nobody want to rent all the space. Even people say, "Oh, it's gonna cost me a lot more heat, more electricity." And, you know, so I saw, definitely, hopefully, we'll bring another people to take next door. I'm not talking with anyone until I make sure it's all approved with the village. This way, that guy, he's ready to move in anytime. And at least I have somebody in there and I could hopefully rent the other one and maybe later on, labor ready lease finish and I could bring somebody else to, their place. I don't mind it.
Obviously, we've got feelings in both directions concerning your request, so unless there's any other comments from board members, consideration for your request will come before us for a vote this coming Monday evening.
Okay.
We thank you for coming in and presenting your situation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, 6501 South Richmond, board to consider approving an annexation request to incorporate the subject lot into the village of Westmont.
Okay, that's me. I'm Sharon Bojack. I'm here representing my husband, James Bojack, who's recovering from surgery, so I'm here as both people. We're requesting annexation into Westmont so we can have better water, so we want to hook up to water, so we don't have to have a water softener and haul the salt blocks and do all that. And we're in the process of trying to sell our house, so that'll be another thing, I think, on the house, we can say we're not unincorporated, we're in Westmont and we have really good water. So that's what we're requesting.
For those that might not know where you live, might be watching this on television, would you give them the, give us the exact location?
Tell them how much the house is and all that kind of stuff.
A little marketing.
It's a really nice house. It's on the corner of 65th and Richmond. We're right on the corner. Brick driveway, cedar house. Been there about 20 some years. So we're right on the corner there.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments from board members?
No.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. You're on our agenda for a vote on Monday. 21 North Cass, board to consider a development request to establish a used bookstore and gift shop in the property at 21 North Cass.
Hi, my name is Janet Archbold. I've been in this town for about 48 years now. My intent with your approval is to open up a store selling used books, novelty gift items, which will be mostly hand or homemade, and greeting cards of different, from different manufacturers that I've been researching. I spent about the last four months working on the business plan that was passed out earlier and getting suppliers lined up and things. Right now, tentative opening date would be, with your approval, October 1st, dependent upon whether or not the fire protection alarm system has to be installed prior to my leasing the space. So if it does, then I may fall a little, couple days, couple weeks behind. But Brian and I have been talking, Brian, the owner of the building, and I have been talking about it and we're trying to come up with some kind of, something so that I can get in there and get it open for the Christmas season, because it'll be perfect for Christmas and it'll fill a niche in Westmont that Westmont doesn't have right now.
Jan, will it work sort of like, you know, I have paperbacks at home, so I bring them to you and you give me a credit and then I buy some from you? Is it sort of that kind of a book exchange or is it more like a...
That part of the book, the bookstore will run like that, yes. The credit will be used, will be able to be used, but it will only be able to be used towards books. Because of the different taxes and the different people supplying the different products, I can't use credits on my books that I have towards their product. But, yes, it would, it'd be on a percentage basis, all books would be 50% off. I'm still thinking, haven't quite decided if it's gonna be 15 or 20% off the cover price for the trade-in value. Hopefully, this computer system that I get will keep track of your credit so you don't have to carry your little happy slip around with you like I've been doing for the last 20 years and buying from used bookstores.
Great.
So it should be, it should work really well.
Good, I'm really excited about this.
I've got about 5,000 books sitting in my house and my house is only a couple of thousand feet bigger than the space, which means, needless to say, it's me and my dog and a pathway to get through right now.
And you said these will be usually handmade items?
Most of them. I have a supplier that makes candles and they come in shapes of pies and parfaits and sundaes and things like that. And then, just different, I was speaking with a woman who knits, who may be willing to supply some items to be sold. Everything will have a shelf life. If it doesn't sell in a certain amount of time, then I know it's not going to work in the store, so therefore I'll find other things to put in there. But I have a family that is very crafty, and I mean that in the best sense of the world.
The artistic sense.
Yes, the artistic sense, as I'm sure everybody knows my mother. And a lot of these things that will be being sold will be things that will be being made by members of my family or friends of members of my family. They'll be gift baskets, that of course, some of the items will have been purchased to be put in the gift baskets, but for the most part, it's going to be candles and flower arrangements, silk flower arrangements, a lot of greeting cards. Like I said, I have 5,000 books and I'm still getting more. I have boxes of them everywhere, but that's about it. Any questions?
Are these recycled cards that are made of recycled?
Not all of them, but some of them will be.
Some of them are, okay.
And if that's what it needs to pass, then I'll make sure every one of them is.
We haven't had a lot of time to read over your business plan, but at first glance and just kind of thumbing through, it looks very solid and I think you did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
And it's very well planned out. There is absolutely no question when you look through here. This'll be a really nice addition to our downtown, so I hope that it works out for you.
You can thank SCORE for that. SCORE had a lot of, my representative from SCORE had a lot to do with making that business plan turn out the way it is. Unfortunately, the banks don't agree. But, you know, there again, that's where family comes in. So, but, yes.
A lot of cakes.
Yes, and opening party will have cake.
Say no more.
Lots of cake.
I think I like it.
What kind would you like? I can have it for you tomorrow.
I like the concept. I think the only thing I want to make sure is that it doesn't look like a used garage sale. You want to keep it with nice items and, you know, good condition books, things like that.
The books will have to meet, I mean, I'm not going to take everything that comes in off the street. Books that are torn or have pages missing or two dog-eared, there's going to be a quality that has to be maintained. Most of the stuff will be one of a kind. It's not going to be, in my opinion, early American garage sale. It won't be a resale shop, except for the books.
And I think it'd be nice, as she's opening and if she sees something not working, she could be asking the customers or even the browsers coming in, you know, "What were you looking for specifically?" And that would help you know what the public is looking for. Maybe you might be doing candles and you might be competing against somebody down the street, so somebody else may have another idea of what they're looking for that nobody's selling.
Exactly. And they'll be, in the beginning, the first couple of months, there'll be questionnaires. I'm gonna have them out so that they can fill in, "What did you like? What didn't you like?" It's gonna be a little eclectic because most of the displays are going to be on antique furniture tables and things because the wall space is going to be taken up completely by books. So, she cracked me up.
I miss that store on Woodward.
So do I.
I used to go all the time.
So do I, and the best one I've found is 30 miles away, so...
Now it'll be right down the street, so...
And now it will be right down the street, exactly, if y'all agree with it. So if there's no other questions, that's where I stand. And I guess my biggest question would be, would the fire monitoring system need to be put in prior to my leasing of the space? That would be something that I would need to know.
What's the square footage?
Just a tiny bit over 2,500 square feet, if you include the basement.
The total building. We might want to point out to the board that this is an item that will be coming to you in general for our next set of meetings. There is a residential apartment unit above a commercial space in this particular building.
And behind. I believe he has three. I'm not sure, though. It could be two, but I think it's three. But he's also going to be looking into that grant, the infrastructure grant, to help meet the cost. But I'm just, my concern is whether or not it'll delay my opening day, if that has to be done prior to, or can it be done once I'm in and up and running? So...
Can we give her an answer to that question?
I think we can.
Chief, have any comments on that? Is that something that the fire department would insist upon before occupancy?
Depends on what we decide next set of meetings. Yeah, I think we haven't really decided yet, have we?
You know, we're looking at different options at this time, and I'd hate to see this young lady move in and then all of a sudden, things change after that point. At the same time, we're also talking about life safety, even though there were other businesses there with occupancy above all this time.
So there's no fire alarm whatsoever in there, is there?
I'm unaware of one.
I think that's the one of the buildings that has nothing.
Okay, because I think the general, we obviously haven't torn it apart, but the consensus or at least talks seem to be that if there's residential over a retail, that we're gonna be looking at early installation of the heat smoke detectors. Was that everybody's understanding? Because I don't, I don't see a waiver of that coming down the pike, not when we saw the buildings that had residential over them with nothing in them. It's just, it ain't gonna happen.
I do know that he has somebody coming in to give him, oops, sorry, an estimate tomorrow to find out how much it'll cost to get in there.
That's a good, that's a good idea.
So if it's underway, I guess is my question, is if he gets a proposal, he accepts the proposal, but the work can't be done until, because the company is backed up until the end of September or something and I want to open October 1st.
I can only speak for myself, but on the next set of meetings, we're gonna be discussing this very topic and as trustee Emery pointed out, more than likely, it's going to end up being a requirement for smoke heat when there's residential above a business. But speaking for myself, if that all plays out the way we expect that it will, I would certainly have no problem, you know, giving this particular business a month or two extra, whatever it took, as to not delay your getting up and running. Is, you know, with the idea that it's not a waiver, it's going in, it may not just be in on the date as required by whatever the ordinance takes. I agree with you on that. And the date, to me, I was thinking, when we do discuss this, that it may not be something, it may be something like the first of the year is when we want...
Something reasonable.
It's not gonna be something we're gonna be sitting there going, "By tomorrow, you have to have it."
Yeah, I think we'll be very reasonable.
This is things that we still have to discuss, when we want it to go effective, we'll have to work with our fire department on it because, you know, we want to protect the people. When you leave, our biggest problem is when you leave that store at night, if something happens, there's no, no way those people above are gonna know if a fire starts.
And I, and I understand that and I completely agree with it. I have no problems with it. My only concern is that October, November, December are the best months in retail and if I can't get open...
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but my understanding is it doesn't require the workman and destruction of everything around it that putting a sprinkler system in, as it does for these. Is that correct? Where she could almost start occupy, not occupy, well, getting things moved in and they can...
Yeah, it shouldn't take more than a few days, once they find out what they need. It's a very small square footage area and, yeah, we're talking just a few days of insulation.
Janet, I will add one thing, since the man standing next to you walking away is going to have the responsibility for determining hazardous use, if you have 5,000 paperbacks and you light any of those candles...
I can't, I can't sell a candle that's been lit.
I know, but if you, you know, one shows that, boy, this smells just like, you know, baked Alaska or whatever, and, you know, so you've got one as a demo and 16 there, then the chief might have an issue. I won't speak for him, but he might have an issue with that.
The only way that I will light a candle is if Frank is in the building with me and he blows it out himself. How is that? Okay.
That works.
Thank you.
That works.
We might make one other point. Staff discussions at this point in response to village board direction would seem to indicate that a building of this type that this lady is interested in occupying would require the smoke and heat, fire alarm, pulse system and horns, whether that commercial space were occupied or not. That's kind of the direction that the staff is taking. So wherever you have residential above a commercial space, whether occupied or not, that's kind of what our discussions have been and we hope that meets the intention of the village board's direction.
Old rags can combust, yes.
If you could press that on Brian, that would be really great because I've been arguing that point, whether I'm here or not, you're still gonna have to do this, but...
That's true.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
And there is such thing as flameless candles, which obviously the board has gotten several gifts from, because I'm a real big thing on the flameless.
I can make sure they're there, too.
Okay.
I'll work on that.
Those you could light.
Yeah, those I could light, flameless candles I could light. And I will make sure that that's on my list of things to research as soon as I get home tonight.
Thank you.
Just another, another customer. Thank you very much.
The greeting cards.
Thank you. Yeah, the greeting cards.
Greeting cards are very, very important in my estimation because a lot of us, you know, you're in a big hurry and you need a card all of a sudden and there's a card shop in downtown Clarendon Hills and I'd been known to go over there and buy a greeting card because I can't buy it in Westmont.
Sure, again, you gotta go to Jewel. Well, and now you can get them, you can get them at the Traveler's Cafe now.
Yep.
And the Ice Cream Depot.
But I'll have a larger...
Not a big selection, but they do have...
But I'll have a larger...
Soon a novel experience.
And a novel experience, we'll have many.
Yes, I'm, space permitting, I'm going to have four spinner racks that are about that tall. That hold about 500 cards each, so, plus maybe a couple of desktop ones.
Works.
So...
Very good. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Next item, 324 North Richmond, board to consider zoning code variance to permit construction of an addition which will encroach into the required front yard setback.
I'm Kathy and this is Ray Sidoma and Mr. Paul's over there is gonna be our builder, hopefully. We are requesting a setback variance. Our house is multi-level with four levels, three sets of eight stairs. The main floor of our house, when you come in from the front door, is living room, dining room and kitchen only. So there's no bathroom on that floor and as we get older, we've watched his parents in the same type of house that we lived in. As they grew older, it was very, very difficult for them to get around. The last two years of his father's life, he spent in the living room where they put a hospital bed and a commode and there was like no family area at all then. We don't want that. We've lived in Westmont for 32 years. I've lived here for 40, actually, but we like our home, we like our neighborhood, we live at 324 North Richmond, right on the border of Clarendon Hills and Westmont. We're on a corner. Our house is set way back from the road with like maybe only 15 feet between the back of the house and the back fence lines on either side and on the south side and the west side. What we're hoping to do or would like to do is build a 16-foot addition completely along the north side of our house, which is Naperville Road. And with that, we would be able to put a bedroom, a bathroom and possibly, what we're hoping would... hoping would be a room for laundry facilities. And it's sort of like a mud area to come in and out that door. Right now, we have, what do you call, a patio door there. So there is an exit there now, which we would continue to have, but it would be 16 feet further west. North, I'm sorry. One of the reasons for doing this besides our stairs, the driveway now is a circle through from Naperville Road to Richmond, and it has a ton of ugly blacktop. It's not in very good shape anymore. It's getting harder and harder to maintain it. And in the wintertime, because we're on the corner in the north and east side like this, the snow blows everything into the corner. And Ray ends up shoveling it out, because there's nowhere to blow it, you know, from the stoop that's on there and the drive that's in the whole blacktop area where it goes into the garage. It ends up being a really tough road to get all that snow out of there. So we were hoping with the addition, which does require a setback variance, that we could change the entrance to the garage to the, what would be the east side of our house. Right now, the entrance is on the north side, and that means you have to come in and drive into the garage from the circle through. We're hoping that by eliminating all that blacktop and changing the entrance to the east side, we'd have a straight shot out to the street with less, you know, less concrete, less blacktop and stuff like that, so that we would be within the variance for the percentage of lot covered. And we'd also, I mean, in the restriction for percentage of lot covered, and we'd also be able to eliminate all that blacktop, so that we'd have more yard space to, you know, to plant grass or whatever.
Absorb water.
And absorb water. There is a problem, somewhat of a problem, in that area with some of the yards flooding. And when I talked to Shannon about it, that was one of her concerns, that by taking out the blacktop, it would give us more absorption in that area, which could help our neighbor a lot, because it really does flood his backyard quite a bit. Other than that, it's just, we like living here, but there's, we also have some health issues right now that are causing concern for stairs and so forth. And we've looked at other houses to buy that would be all on one level, but most of the ones that are available that we could afford wouldn't give us enough space. We have a 25-year-old daughter that's living at home, and she needs her space, we need our space. And when we talked about the, what the addition would look like, our neighborhood has a house across the street that's probably 100 years old, it has a house across the street that's a million dollars, that's five years old, maybe. You know, it's very eclectic in terms of the types of buildings that are there. And I don't think that the addition that we're planning, a 16-foot discontinuing the roof level for that main floor, 16 feet to the north, would make much difference in the appearance in terms of the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. So that would, that's kind of what our request is, if I can help you with questions, I'd be happy to answer anything you want to ask, if I can.
Well, I know the house, and I know the driveway issue, and I think that would be a great improvement.
Yeah, I do, too.
There's no doubt.
Any other comments from board members?
What is the, I'm looking at the Plata survey, but I'm having trouble. What is the depth from the corner to Naperville Road? How much?
Right now, it's already out of thing, because the house was built in 70...
Seventy...
Six.
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. It, the, on the, yeah, the one that you're looking at.
This one looks like 301 feet.
Does this show up right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Right now, from the corner of the house to Naperville Road, it's 38, 16, 38 feet, 16 inches.
So that'll be 16 feet shorter.
Less, yes.
Okay. And then the other corner, though, that was 30, that's going to be 16, so you're talking about...
About 14 feet.
Twenty-nine. Fifteen, sixteen, so you're talking about 29 feet. Or, I mean, six, yeah, 14 feet.
Yes.
14.
About that. The trees that you see are all on city property. The, well, I shouldn't say all of them, there's, the one that says E right in the corner is actually on our land. But these are big old, yeah, Japanese elms, they're very, very tall, a lot of dead wood in them. In fact, last spring, we had one that was here that we took out, because it had so much dead wood in it that when we talked to, what's his name, I forget now, the guy from, does your...
John Eater.
Arborist.
Wood eater.
Yeah.
John Eater.
He came out and decided that was one that should go, because it had so much dead wood in it. But anyway, the rest of them would still be there.
And there's no sidewalk there either, is there?
No, no, there isn't. In fact, there's a, from here over on both sides, there's a pretty good-sized gutter. I mean, it's a ditch that's...
About three foot deep.
About three foot deep. So I doubt that they would come along and put a sidewalk there anytime soon, without having to put curbs and everything else in there, because the gutters are so deep. But in any case, I think that, and the funny part about it is, when you look at our house at an angle, looking down the street this way, our neighbor's house is an old farmhouse that's been added to in the back. So his porch steps come out as far as our addition would, just because that's the way it was, before all the codes went into effect in 75. But, and we're set back far enough from the road. One lady came to the earlier meeting with the planning commission, was concerned about, you know, seeing things, because she had a small daughter that would ride a bike. Well, they can't ride on our side of the street, because it's just too dangerous without a sidewalk and the gutters being there. But we're set so far back from the road that, you know, you really don't have any problems seeing traffic coming from either direction.
So the garage is over here where your driveway is? That would be the entrance to your garage?
That would be the new entrance.
The new entrance.
Yeah. Right now, it comes in like this.
Okay, that's what I was trying to...
So it's like on her, so that you could see. This, right now, is the circle-through driveway, and the entrance to the garage is here. So everything piles up in this corner, and as far as snow and everything else, so the, what do you call it? What's the snowy seeds that we...
Oh, cottonwood?
Oh, cottonwood. We vacuum cottonwood out of that section with a shock back, because it...
Throw a shovel.
Yeah, because it gets in there so badly. It's just, it's a weird corner, the way the house is. And that's why we thought putting the, you know, drive over on this side and changing it would shorten the distance and make it easier for, like, the seeds will blow off of it, and he'll be able to shovel it in the wintertime much easier. Plus, we'll get rid of all that blacktop that's, could be mine.
The Manchester driveways that are there already down the street?
Fred, we have a question.
We have a question.
If it's a Richmond address, wouldn't...
Yeah, don't ask me.
No, front yard setback goes off of Richmond.
Wouldn't this be a side yard setback?
What the handbook says, the material I got from Shannon, the setback is for both streets, like, when you're on a corner, it's for both streets.
Oh, so it's for either street?
Because it was really confusing to me when it appeared in the paper as a front yard setback, because we consider Richmond as our front yard.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, we don't have a setback problem on Richmond, you know, if it's over here.
From street to...
Okay, makes sense.
Any wall of the building?
Yeah.
Front side yard setback on a corner lot.
Yep.
Got it. Just to interject, the zoning code defines the front yard as the narrowest street frontage, and in this case, the Naperville roadside was the narrowest.
So it is written up that way for that purpose, despite the fact that they have a Richmond Avenue mailing address or street address.
I think we're doing something right. It does make sense.
Stranger things have happened.
If I might also just add a few points of clarification to Trustee Kavna's question about the setbacks. There's an average setback of about 20 feet. The western corner of the new addition is about 16, as I believe was mentioned. The eastern corner was about 24 feet. And then, it's not every day that we get people wanting to reduce their lot coverage, so I commend the petitioners here for wanting to do so, especially in this area. The reduction is probably about 5% in their lot coverage. They're down to, with these changes, once they're instituted, even with the new addition, probably about 35% lot coverage.
That's with taking out the driveway?
Right.
Good.
Okay, that's good.
Okey-dokey.
It's very good.
Sounds like a good plan. I think it'll look really nice when it's completed.
I hope so. I mean, I think it will fit right in, you know...
When do you plan on starting it?
When do you plan on blasting it?
Tomorrow, or Wednesday morning?
Yeah, as soon as we can do it. I mean, we've already talked to Mr. Paul's about it. He has buildings that he's built in Westmont already, on Melrose and Warwick, I think it is, right? And we happened to run into him at a, I guess you'd call it a construction trade fair, whatever. So, you know, I think we're comfortable with having him do it, and we've talked to him about it. It's just a matter of when we can get everything okay through the village.
It'll look nice. It'll look really nice.
I appreciate you giving us some time and all your thought about this and everything, because it will make our life easier in the future. And we get to stay here.
And we want you to stay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next item, 200 East Ogden Mercedes-Benz. Board to consider the following. Zoning code variance request to permit the construction of a parking lot to encroach into the required five-foot setback. B, land development code variance request to permit the construction of a parking lot within the required side and rear yard easements. C, site landscaping plan approval for an automobile dealership addition. D, waiver request of the four-foot landscape buffer requirement for parking lots. And E, waiver request of the full masonry commercial construction requirement. Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Tom McCabe, here representing Mercedes-Benz of Westmont. And tonight, we're here before you. The Mercedes dealership is looking to put an addition on their building on the west side to add a showroom, and in that process, pretty much, the other items are more housekeeping. They've bought the KDA lot before, and the KDA lot didn't quite, wasn't square, the parking, and there's a gravel lot in the back right now that you see that's shaded there, that's going to be paved. And so with the new addition, it required that that parking lot next door, the KDA lot is currently, to put aisles through, because the current aisle is where the addition's going to be. And as far as the variations on the setbacks, the parking lots, we're basically taking the parking lots as they are. So I think right now, they're constructed probably four and a half feet. I think we're looking for maybe a half a foot or a foot variance, and that's just based on the existing conditions that are there today. This isn't a real good picture. I think you all have a picture of what the new Mercedes addition's going to look like.
That's something I haven't seen. There's something there.
With your help, we've got BMW underway, and we have Audi underway, and I think Mercedes felt neglected, so...
Looks great.
Comments from board members?
It's good.
I think it looks nice.
We couldn't be happier with the success of all three of the dealerships and providing the village with the sales tax revenue that you do. Everything that, every addition or modification that has been made by any of the three dealerships has been top-shelf first quality and has added a lot to the appearance of our automobile group along Ogden Avenue.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate all your help and the staff's help. They've been very, very good to work with.
Does staff have anything to add?
Yeah, Shannon, any comments that you...
Unless there are any questions.
Everything is, I see the planning had no problems, any...
Planning and zoning had unanimous recommendation of approval at their meeting with pretty limited discussion. Unless there are specific questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Start and finish date?
They're actually, I apologize, I had stepped out with the last applicant, so I'm not sure if this may have been mentioned, but they're going through the review cycle concurrently. We're trying to kind of facilitate that, so that they could get a start a little bit sooner. So we've been fortunate in that they've been great to work with as well. I think we're through, as of today, our third engineering review cycle, and so this will be a project that'll probably break ground a little bit sooner than what we're used to seeing because of that.
Okay. Good.
Any other comments?
No, it looks great.
Thanks. I could tell you, the contractor's already yelling at us. They want a building, they want to come in for a building permit on Tuesday, so...
Thank you for being in Westmont.
Thank you.
We are happy to have you. The Wham!
Next item, temporary lifting of the hiring freeze. Board to consider temporary lifting of the hiring freeze to permit the hiring of A1 school crossing guard and B to substitute crossing guards.
Indiana Mayor and Board, with the passing of Carol Sandler suddenly last at the end of last school year, we're in the need of one full cross time crossing, not a full time, but a crossing guard for Richmond and Cass. Also, we had one of our substitute crossing guards leave and move back to Indiana, and the last time the board lifted the freeze, we never filled a second one, we never had a substitute position, we never had enough applicants. So we're looking for two substitute school crossing guards. Substitutes are only used when a regular crossing guard calls in sick or can't make their regular duty. It's the only time we use the substitutes. And again, for the one full-time, or the one regular crossing guard.
Sounds reasonable.
Is it all your podium time?
Yes, ma'am.
Nothing else to add?
It's all I'm permitted today.
Next proclamation. Board to consider proclamation declaring the week of September 5th through 11th, 2010, as National Payroll Week. A copy of this is in our packets, and we will consider this for Monday evening. Next item, Girl Scouts. Board to consider the following requests from the Girl Scouts of Greater Chicago and Northwest Indiana to hold A, Fall Product Program, B, Door-to-Door Cookie Sales, and C, Annual Booth Cookie Sales.
In bed?
They're all in bed.
Yeah, it's late for them.
This is a very controversial item, so I suggest that all board members take particular, pay particular close attention to your vote on this issue. With that being said, any questions?
No.
Moving right along. Finance ordinance number eight.
Waive the reading?
What's to waive the reading? Okay, purchase orders. Questions on purchase orders? No comments on the sign on the water tank?
Looks nice.
Looks wonderful.
The new logo looks nice. Nice change.
It's very nice.
I think they can see it from Downers Grove.
They should certainly be able to see it when they're coming through on the train as well.
Trains, that's for sure.
But we still wanted one to say hot, and the other one to say cold. Do that.
Very good.
Mayor, if I may, I've had both sides of me handed the time. The blood drive on the 18th is at the fire department headquarters from 3:30 to 6:30. So, everybody, come on in and give your blood.
The fire facility on South Cass Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Purchase order, separate vote. Questions? Questions? Hearing no questions on purchase orders, moving right along. We have no request before us this evening for an executive session. I think we will have one by Monday, I'm sure. With that being said, unless there's something else to come before the board, I would entertain a motion adjourned at this time.
So move Seneca.
I didn't hear the second. Was there a second?
No.
Mr. Clerk?
Second, am I.
Roll call, please. Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Clevino.
Yes.
They are adjourned.